On the August 16th, Common Council Committee of the Halt Order.
Recording in progress.
Mayor Olson?
Here.
Alderman Mayor?
Here.
Alderwoman Wilhelm?
Here.
Alderwoman Hanneman?
Here.
Alderman Barber?
Here.
Alderman Nelson?
Here. Of course, please join the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Although I always like it when there's people in attendance that are non-citizens or that are citizens, not employees. I'm kind of happy tonight because we're going to break with tradition, go right to a closed session. That's to accommodate the cost of a consultant.
What did you do?
He broke it as I watched him. Sanctions.
Man. So with that, we move to item two. Is there a motion? I'm sorry, item one. Why did I say item two?
It's item two.
It is item two. Is there a motion to enter closed session to deliberate upon pursuant to stats 19.8517 to deliberate upon information, terms, and provisions of the potential provision of public water supply to the City of Franklin as related to the city, the Franklin Municipal Water Utility, and its customers in 2024 and beyond, and the potential negotiation of terms in relation thereto, including but not limited to potential amendments to the agreement for Oak Creek to provide water to wholesale customers of Franklin and to potential agreements. Jeez, had a tough time tonight. Potential agreement terms of alternate public water supply sources, including but not limited to City Milwaukee and Milwaukee Water Works and the investment of public funds and the governmental actions in relation thereto for competitive and bargaining reasons and to reenter open session at the same place thereafter to act on such matters as discussed there and as it seems appropriate. Move to closed session.
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Alderman Mayor?
Aye.
Alderwoman Wilhelm?
Aye.
Alderwoman Hanneman?
Aye.
Alderman Barber?
Aye.
Alderman Nelson?
Aye.
Motion carries, five eyes, no nose, no hives, and no abstentions. Chief, I'll just, I'll just call you.
Recording stopped.
And lady. Twenty minutes, chief.
Am I hitting?
Paul, one second.
Am I hitting closed session?
In one second. Open the door, please.
Are you stopping me?
With that, we are in closed session. Sixteen, we are back in open session. No, no decision or action is being taken on the previous item, even though we couldn't do it anyway because it's committed a hole. So with that, we're going to move on to item three, Keeney Architects LLC Status Report Updating Concerning the Department of Public Works and Fire Needs Assessment Services. Pro- check. Mr. Morrow.
Thank you.
Mr. Engineer.
All right, I'm going to invite my partners up. John Wallencamp with Keeney Architects, and you know Chief Remington, Franklin Fire Department. So we're going to start with the DPW portion of this project. So we started looking at expansion of our facilities at 7979 Ryan Road. So you recognize, no, I don't need it. So. Public Works facility was constructed in 1995. Lower right-hand corner is a picture of David R. Mayor. It's named after. And you probably recognize the mayor at the time in the upper left, Mr. Clements. 1995, what was going on? So if you think about 1995, technology-wise, Windows 95 was out. I remember buying my, my home Dell computer, installing Windows 95, and was able to get access to the internet, although I needed a modem to do so. You may remember the news stories of the year, the glove don't fit, you know, you must acquit. Unfortunately, I think most people were more concerned of that trial than the trial of Timothy McVeigh, one of the biggest things to happen terrorist on the US soil until 9/11. For you sports fans, this is back when Nebraska had a good football team. They, they finished number one that season. For you Packer fans, they drafted Craig Newsome. They went 11-5 that year, went a couple rounds in the playoffs. Milwaukee Brewers, they had a logo that I've never seen. Apparently that wasn't the only thing forgotten from the season. They finished 35 games back, but they did decide to build a new stadium. Milwaukee Bucks went 34-48, missed the playoffs. So just to kind of give you an idea, so if you're thinking 1995, things like flip phones, flip phones was not even a thing yet. You had to wait another year or so for flip phones was able to purchase. If you wanted to watch the, the most, the highest rated or the highest grossing movie of the year, Batman Forever, you could not get on DVD. That was still two years out. So you could go to Blockbuster and rent on VHS. The thing that really brings this forth to me is looking at the Billboard Top 10 Songs of the Year. Quite honestly, I looked at that list, had no idea what any of the songs were. Wasn't till I listened to them, it's like, that might be a little vague and familiar. But I see that as kids' songs, if you will. It wasn't my high school or college songs. You know, that's, just shows how young this building is. So if this building were born in 1995, which it was, it would be a Gen Y. So that just illustrates that this building is not old. You're going to hear a lot of people, if we talk about spending money on this project, is hey, that building's not old. Why are we, why are we trying to replace it or why are we trying to expand on it? Quite honestly, they're right. It's not an old building. I, I've been to several DPW facilities where it was 1940-some era or WPA construction, and guys are working in, guys and ladies are working in, you know, a lot of building code violations and so forth. So that is not the case here. So I do appreciate the fact that Franklin gave our public works staff a, a nice building back in 1995. But one thing that I want to stress tonight, not only my presentation, but the chief's presentation and, and John's presentation is the fact that our building is just, it, we're at capacity. You know, it's met its useful life. It does not meet the needs. If we're ever being asked to be efficient with our resources, this is actually a hindrance for what we're doing. If you look at Franklin in 26 years, from 1995 to 2021, our population has increased by 46%, and we're still a growing community. That's still expected to go much higher. City employees, remember, we keep, we keep all the city vehicles on the road and keep them functioning. That's gone up by 63%. The road mileage has gone up by 37%. Our full-time employees has gone from 14 to 22. And our park trails, I wasn't able to find a stat for 1995, but it was very minimal. You know, we've really increased that today, and we're still planning for lots more parks and trails in the future. Having said that, we're not, we're not relying on that and using it as an excuse. We're doing what I call the toothpaste principle. We're trying to squeeze the most out of our resources. Some recent examples, the manpower this past year, COVID is one of the side effects. We told our guys not to come back to the shop for lunches, you know, try to stay separate, what have you. We realized that, you know, by the time it takes a guy to throw his hand tools in the truck and drive to the shop and then go back and unload his hand tools, we even, if you spread that over 20 guys, we basically earned a new employee this year because of that. We're looking at shortened work weeks. We've been talking a lot of DPWs. They're finding out that four or four and a half days, they're finding, is a lot more efficient, getting a lot more done for the work, plus guys seem to like it. It's one of those fringes that we can't, you know, afford to pay for, but, but the guys do enjoy it. So that's one of those fringes that's beneficial. So we're looking at, at that method, too. We do know that there, that we need to improve our workflow. So when we park vehicles behind other vehicles, it takes more time to get out. The space and the workflow in the yard, the workflow has, I should say, the, the yard has kind of evolved over time organically, and we really need to rethink exactly how everything's situated and the process flows and make things much more efficient. Fueling and loading, it's not uncommon to see our guys, you know, waiting in line to, to get the salt. When they come back at the end of the day, everybody's in line to get fuel. If you, if you drive by and you see one city vehicle out there waiting for fuel, you probably see two or three waiting in line. So all of those things are affecting our efficiency, which every day is minutes and every week is hours. And, you know, that's the equivalent of personnel. We know that we need to reestablish adequate workspaces. We have shared and cluttered workspaces. You see that picture there? That's our hallway. We have desk in the hallway that's really kind of a catch-all place, but yet guys are expected to clear it off when they come in and have to fill out paperwork. We have fridges in the hallways and everything else. It's just really stacked. Every corner of the building is just absolutely full. We have shared storage and workspaces for different activities. It's not uncommon for guys to have to clear out something that's being stored so they can have a place to work, you know, especially during inclement weather. All those minutes, again, translate to hours and additional manpower as we could be out maintaining the roads. Equipment, we know we need to be much more efficient in how we take care of things. We do have welders that do a good job welding, but every time they go to weld something, they have to go clear out a spot, bring out the welding equipment, make a new spot to do their welding, and it's not really the, the most optimum place to do that. The paint area, we don't have a place very large for vehicles to drive into to paint things while it's still in the truck. That means that guys have to take parts off the truck to take them in the paint booth. Again, those are several minutes per, per paint job, which again translates to hours and, and man-hours. Adequate wash area, if it were much easier and quicker to, to wash our trucks when we come back, you know, obviously our trucks are out in salt a lot, we can make our vehicles last a lot longer. Accessible fluids, you know, CDL licenses require that guys check their fluids every time they, they go out. So right now, there's only one place in the garage over in the corner to get their fluids. So guy checks and finds out he needs oil, he's got to trek, you know, all the way across the garage to get oil. Most modern garages have basically a little station in every, every parking space. So that's just a few examples. Need proper storage. We've basically stacked and double stacked everything inside, so we have a lot of things being stored outside. You know that things tend not to last as long if they're being stored outside. Wet piles of materials, if, with all the rain we've had these past few weeks, if we're doing a job or we need to put topsoil down, we have to go back later and do it later because all our topsoil is wet. We just don't have a place to keep dry topsoil. Security, that's much different than it was in 1995. Fortunately, we haven't had this issue, but a lot of other public works garages have had this issue where someone just walks in and walks out with a lot of, you know, chainsaws and weed whips and those kinds of things, just because of the nature of how we operate during the day. That is a possibility. I won't go into detail here in open session, but that is a concern. We tried to address, but it, it's a possibility. Access to employees is too open, you know, upset customers. We all hear those stories. Those kinds of things were not thought of in 1995 that we have to deal with today. Now, we're a growing community, growing department. That basically means growing paints. You know, we have increased parks, parks and vegetation. We have to mow every park we pick up. We just have to be a lot more efficient in what we do. Playgrounds, maintenance and repairs, again, the more playgrounds we do, the more time we have to spend doing that. We just have to be much more efficient. Shelters, cleaning and maintenance, for whatever reason, folks that are renting shelters tend to be messier. We've talked about this ad nauseam in our Parks Commission. If you weren't aware, our Pleasant View Pavilion, we only rent it once on the weekend because we just don't have the staff to clean it. When we show up Monday, we're paying our $28 guys to go, to go clean it. That's, I wish we could be more efficient. We're just trying to do what we can. Every mile of trail that we add, it's more mowing, more maintenance, more plowing. We just have to be more efficient, more efficient, more efficient. Same with increased roads. You know, we have maximum route times. Guys can't stay out 24 hours. There's, there's limits of how long they, they can plow. So every subdivision we add, it's only a half hour here, a half hour there, but sometimes we just can't get to everything during storms. Pavement, we're going to talk a lot about this during budget. We are on a, you know, typical road might last 20 years. Right now, we're on pace for 32-year replacement cycle. And if we continue doing what we're doing in a couple more years, we're going to be at 100 years, which isn't, isn't sustainable. We have to do something. So we have to be more efficient with what we do. Drainage, obviously Franklin is the, is the, is the home of the wetland. We have ditches and storm sewers everywhere. That's probably our number one cause and complaints. Signage, production, installing, replacing, you know, we have to make sure that we stay on top of those and replace them when needed. Increased fleet maintenance, obviously we're taking care of vehicles for all the departments, and we talked about fueling. So we just need to be more efficient, more efficient, more efficient. There's only so much, you know, squeezing the toothpaste that we can do. In addition, we have to start adapting to tomorrow. So we have increased regulations every year, the safety, you know, the OSHA kinds of things. They're good, the good rules, but they make us less efficient. Environmental issues, you know, the stormwater, we just got audited by MS4 for our stormwater stuff. Found out some more things we should be doing. The recent discussion about the, our favorite tree, trying to get rid of all of them, scares us to death that that actually might come through because that's something else we just don't have time to do, quite honestly. Increased technology, these are things that, you know, back Windows 95 and modems, dial-up modems, we just, we just didn't consider. So our, our buildings are not equipped with the, with the increased communications that can allow us to be more efficient, the technology tools, you know. Who would have thought in 1995, we actually had the Dick Tracy watches that we could, you know, to start using? Managing GPS, security and tracking, we're doing all those things, starting to do more things. Again, our buildings just, just were not equipped with that technology and with a whole host of other issues this past week illustrated. We've got a long way to go in that category. Increased vehicle needs, this is something absolutely could not have been thought of in 1995. In 1995, most of our vehicles were single-axle dump trucks. Now, pretty much everything is, is tandem. So we just, these are larger vehicles trying to get curves around these. It's just almost impossible. There's vehicles, trailers, we cannot take into our garage because we just can't go around the curves to get in and out. And the, the final one is something, you know, in 2035, General Motors Forward and all the others say that they'll, they won't make combustion engines anymore. I'm not sure what that means for our, our large plow trucks, but I could, I'm pretty sure that we won't have diesel engines like we have today. So there's something new coming on. We're, we're bound to see electric vehicles lined up. And our, again, our current station is not just, we couldn't imagine that in 1995, Windows 95 era. So when we were talking about what to do, we knew that our existing building could be expanded a little bit. We just looked at everything on our site. The David Mayer Building, 25 years old, you know, it does need a new roof, windows, doors, you know, those kinds of updates that we could do. But we knew that we were missing many of the modern amenities that you see in other public works garages that allowed them to be more efficient. And we knew that we were at overcapacity in all the areas. So if I were to grade our David Mayer Building, I, I gave it a B. I think it's a, again, it's a good building. It's got good bones. I'm not complaining about it, but it's just, it just doesn't fit our needs. It's just not big enough. Looking at the old salt barn, structurally on sound, it has adequate space. We're anticipating keeping it with our new salt barn. The thought was we would use that for our brine making facility and some storage of some other things, but once we cleared it out, we realized the wood was just rotted too far. If all the space were usable, it'd be a nice space, but it's just structurally on sound. So we have to be careful stacking stuff against the walls. So it needs to be rebuilt or removed. I would give that not efficient. I rate that as a D. New salt dome, again, this, we just built this a few years ago, so I think this is in good shape. We had a large discussion whether we needed a conveyor or not. The thought at the time was we could still use the existing salt barn for some of our storage. That's not to be the case, and we, hindsight, we wish we would have spent the extra money for a conveyor. But I'll give it an A minus. I mean, it's, it's a good facility and appreciate having it. I did. That's why I gave it an A. So the recycling center, you know, it does serve its purpose, but it has limited hours and it's not monitored when it's open. So we have a lot of folks using it who really shouldn't be. We have a lot of folks who use it how they should not be. And, and then a lot of folks can't, or complain because it's not convenient for the hours that they want it. So there are some ideas we could do. If we were to make it builder, bigger, it is constrained by other buildings in our drive aisles, so we really can't make it bigger and make those improvements. I'll give it a C. It is functional, but it's got a lot to be desired. The fueling station, again, this is something else that serves its purpose. We do have a, a nice fuel tracking system, but they're above-ground tanks, which isn't a bad thing, but they are front and center in front of the place and, you know, a target, quite honestly. It'd be nice to hide them a little bit better, either underground or, or behind some other protection.
It doesn't serve its purpose from the power or something.
Yeah. So last week, we, we had an issue. So additional tanks are needed and currently lines for fueling. So we, you know, we do need to get that on the, the backup generator. So I, I'll give that a C. The old city garage, insufficient space and lax amenity for shop space. Again, this is prime location where we have to pull a bunch of things out just to do any work. Constructed around the 1950s, we think. We can't expand that. Even if we wanted to, we couldn't expand it because of everything else around it. So I'll, I'll give it a D minus. It just really needs to come down. It's just so inefficient. The, we call it the old city hall, but there's some dispute whether that was even the city hall. It may have been a fire station or whatever it is up there next to Ryan Road. Very inefficient space. We use it for cold storage only. We, we need to get rid of that and have some more efficient space. Can't expand it anywhere. DOT, it's basically in there right of way. I'll give that a D minus. And the site, so serves a purpose, but space for storage materials is at capacity. Drive patterns are not conducive to everything that we're trying to do. Again, it just takes minutes and minutes, which turn into hours and, and equivalent manpower. So we're looking at converting the softball fields. We do have some areas, but we, it's going to take a lot of work to incorporate that. We just can't fence it in because we have to have sediment ponds to collect everything, and it's going to take a lot of thought to, to expand the system. So we really do need some help to figure out how to make that site. So, so when you look at that list, you know, we've got a few, few bright spots, but for the most part, our site's a lot to be desired. So that's why we, we decided to have a consultant come in, help us figure this out. Let's do it right. Let's think ahead. Let's try to allow ourselves the most capacity for, for how we do this in the future. Here's a few sites, drone shots that we took Friday afternoon. This is over the ball field, looking north. So you see Ryan Road there at the top. And then we have a shot from the other direction. This is over Ryan Road, looking south. So it's somewhat misleading because at this time of the year, we have cleared a lot of our things out of the yard, but as winter time comes, you'll see those piles grow. So for example, that mulch pile, there are times when it's basically completely covered. But, but for the, right now, it's pretty much all gone. So. The, this is over 76th Street, looking west, you see Zuren at the top. And the other direction, if you're over Zuren, looking the other direction, you see the storage. Kind of a quiet neighborhood. It's kind of nice to have that there. So just to illustrate, when we look at an aerial of the site, first thing we notice are the, the turn radiuses. So it's just extremely tight. Every single driver complains about trying to get in and out of those things with the trucks that we have. Once you get inside, they all hang over the, the parking stalls because again, the trucks now are, are just a lot bigger than they were in 1995.
You know, Glenn, we can fix that. Kevin's going to come out of his chair. We'll just buy smaller trucks or no trucks at all, right, Kevin?
So, but, so when I start listing exactly what goes on at this site, it's pretty obvious that everything is just crowded and cluttered. I'm amazed that it looks as neat as it does from aerials. When you look at everything we have, kudos to Kevin and, and the guys for trying to keep a really nice site and keep everything tidy. Because when you look at everything where the sand pile is, where the pipes are, where the, you know, they store the barrels and the festival stuff and the light poles and the spreaders and just, just look at where everything is stored, it's just an absolutely tight site. We just cannot fit anything else on this site. So that's the DPW part of this presentation. I'm going to turn it over to, to Adam, and then I'll let our consultant talk about the process he's going through. Then we'll, we'll open everything up for questions.
Testing. Okay, so our 30,000-foot view of this is not the same as Glenn's problem. We're not bursting at the seams, particularly at Station 2. Our problem is that it's not well-located to be able to help take up some of the call volume of the other busier stations, and at the same time, it's not covering a whole lot of actual call volume by itself. So the question is, do we do what we originally thought we would need to do many years ago and build a fourth station? And when you build a station, you have to commit to staffing that station. So there's considerable more cost in that. The other option is whether we can move Station 2 to a better location that allows it to take up call volume from the other stations and really cover our residential properties because that's what we find really drives our call volume. Yeah, I will get to the map in just a second. So what, I like to make decisions based on what the data is telling. I can't predict the future, but I can look at our data currently. And 80% of what we do is EMS, vast majority of our calls, and we do those very well. But residential accounts for a full two-thirds of those calls. And by contrast, all commercial and industrial together only accounts for 4% of our EMS call volume. Residential development calls for 45% of our non-EMS calls. That's everything from full-blown structure fire to alarm sounding to child pull the pole station. Everything else is included in that, and residential accounts for 45% compared to 14% for commercial and industrial. So here are our station locations. Station 1, obviously up near the, the city hall and library. Station number 3 is near the high school. And station number 2 is down off 60th Street, about three-fifths of a mile south of Ryan Road. It was built over 20 years ago at a phase when the business park was expanding. Harley-Davidson was coming in, bringing, you know, bringing their warehouse down here. Gardettos was going big then, later became, now it's Campbell's Soup owns it. But there was a lot of stuff going on, and the feeling was we really needed to cover this business park. And that's what drove a lot of these decisions. And then the thinking, and some of this, I'm a little speculating about because I just started on the department back then, and I wasn't privy to how these decisions were made. We heard, you know, filter down talk later about how decisions were possibly made. And the thinking was that the southwestern part of the city, as it developed eventually, we would need a fourth fire station there. The reason we're here now, I'm sorry.
I'm going to interrupt you because I've been thinking about this for the last three, six years. We need to name the stations, okay? Can we, can we meet, have a cup of coffee and do that? Because I've always gotten two and three screwed up, and now you're going to add four to me?
The problem was, 2 was built after, it's complex.
It's worth a coffee. It's what? They're all in my district. See? Anyway, we got more serious.
That covers.
But I digress.
Yes.
Original Station 2 was.
Where can?
Wendell Park.
I'm sorry.
So it's got nothing to do with.
So the question becomes, okay, we cover this business park very well from the station. At least we would if we had staffing there, which we've never really committed to staffing that station when it was built. But it, it covers very little else, population-wise, and it makes it very difficult for us to support other stations. When you have to travel three-fifths of a mile to get to east-west access, and you still can't go north here because 60th Street dead ends, you have to, you find yourselves, like if we need to go to Wheaton, we're going to go up to Ryan Road, go east to 27, and then we're going to go south again over a mile. So it's not a, a good pattern. And this, I just want to show you what this looks like. Here is our business and industrial. That's everything from restaurants to retail to what's in the industrial park. Like I said, I think it's 4% of our EMS calls, and these are EMS-only. This is the report I do kind of for just tracking our call volume. And it's actually declining, and it stays relatively stable. You can see our one and two family residential, our multifamily, senior living, CBRFs. All of this is pretty regularly increasing. And again, this is what we need to cover to do our job. So future challenges, that's why we're here right at this moment because this project's going on, we've got development coming in. That southwest of the city is going to fill up, and it's going to fill up with residential primarily. and it's going to fill up with residential primarily.
Chief, you're being modest. So for the council's benefit, there was discussion by Glenn and his folks and Peggy and then the, all of us around, what are we going to do with the DPW garage? And, and Adam's always talking about how do we cover the southwest part of the city? You see it in all the reports that, uh, we get on development proposals that we can't cover that. And Adam and his staff said, wait a minute. Couldn't we do something with DPW and the facility on 83rd Street? So it's Adam and the creativity of he and the staff that came up with this idea.
It was actually Paul. We were having conversations years ago about impact fee planning and when and where Station Four would need to go in. And I said, I don't even want to have this conversation unless we're talking about staffing it. And I don't know if I made a comment if it could be better located. But it was Paul's.
So let me apologize, Paul. It was Paul's idea, talking to Adam, who was then talking to Glenn, who talked to Peggy, who talked to me, who then talked to. Oh, sure.
Okay, so.
Compliments?
There's, we know there's development, residential development coming into areas that are not well served by existing fire stations and our staffing levels. We always thought, um, Loomis Road would kind of help us get to that area city and maybe kind of minimize things. But that's covered from Station One and Station One is out all day long. They're not available to go down and, and offset call volume in Station Two's area to the southwest. We also don't have mutual aid down there. Station Three up off, um, 51st and Drexel is well served by all the communities around us. We have Milwaukee, you know, Creek companies coming from the east. We have Greendale, Greenfield, Hills Corners. It's well supported by all of these other departments. We have no friends to the south or west, at least not full-time departments that are meeting kind of our, um, expectations and standards. Response times for first, okay, response times are, I don't want to say they're not important, but for a vast majority of emergency calls, they're not that important. We handle a lot of low acuity calls, like, you know, I have a fever, I'm sick. You know, help people up who fell out of their wheelchair, things like that. We don't have to fly red lights and sirens to those calls. For a small number of calls where time is critical, time is very critical. And I'm talking bigger stuff like structure fires and a serious medical event like a cardiac arrest. Now, it doesn't just matter when we get that first unit there. That's helps, it's a good benchmark to use, but we have to get what's called an effective response force there. For a structure fire, first alarm, a structure fire, that's about 25 people. When you're thinking fire extinguishment, search and rescue, ventilation, securing water supply. And then if you got a victim, you have to go up a whole nother alarm level because that just took it to the next level. And if you think of like a cardiac arrest type call, um, the Lucas help, Lucas device helps us a lot now. But we used to have to rotate three people to do CPR compressions because per protocol, you can only do them two minutes effectively. And then you become tired, strained, and the quality of the compressions goes down. So you've got two to three people dedicated just to compressions. That leaves airway management actually running the call as the officer and communicating with family members and assessing what's going on as well as IV access and medication administration. So for a serious medical call, we're talking a minimum of five to six people. That's what we need to get to that scene, not just that first two ambulance. And as our other units gets busier, this is going to be very difficult to accomplish in this area. And the other problem is the kind of structures that we were building down there. Modern, single-family residential structures are made of very lightweight materials, often with composites and resins and other things to give it strength. But those burn extremely fast. And the fact that they're open concept, smoke and heat just develops quicker. And that time from when it's contents of the building that are burning to the actual structure of the building and you're risking failure and collapse is much, much faster than it was, um, 30, 40, 50 years ago. Also furnishings, modern furnishings have an impact on this as well. I've heard comparisons between a, a memory foam mattress is, it might as well be a bucket of kerosene in that structure.
I have a delivery tomorrow at 11:30.
Don't smoke in bed. There's also some industrial park, uh, development coming in this area. As we said, that's not a primary driver of our call volume, but we still need to be able to effectively respond to it. So option one, I mean, option one is actually we can do nothing at all and hope for the best. But I'd like to advocate for a more proactive response to emergency call throughout the city. Option one, like we discussed, is to construct a fourth fire station somewhere in that southwest quadrant. Costs for building and construction would be similar to moving Station Two. But you're also looking at Glenn, I'm, or Paul, I'm ballparking this, but 1.8 to $2 million to staff the 13 to 15 people that would be necessary to increase our staffing by four personnel per day. And that's if we keep Station Two open and we still haven't staffed Station Two. So the advantage, it does better cover our entire city. A bigger department has more flexibility. It's easier to adapt and adjust when you have the resources to do that. So yeah, it would be better to build a Station Four if we made that decision in a vacuum. You can't look away from $2 million a year and question whether that's the right thing to do. So substantial increase in annual personnel expenditure by obviously 25%. Part of the other problem is it doesn't really fix the current Station Two issues. It's, Station Two is still understaffed. It's still not effectively located to allow us to respond and, and take up Station Two's share of what should be the city call volume. Option two is to relocate Station Two. We could largely staff that with existing personnel, not completely. I heard Alderwoman will have made a comment in a previous meeting that just moving our station doesn't fix all of our problems. And that's absolutely true. We have a location problem and then we have a personnel staffing issue. That I won't get into much in this presentation. That's more for when we're talking about budgets, capital personnel budgets for next year.
But I'll do it. It's a priority in this year's budget for us to include two firefighters in the budget. And don't complain. Two firefighters, period. So if you guys can find enough for four more bodies, I'm all in. But that's only one. No, we're all, we're set.
Our plan is to use these two positions as flex staffing positions. I'll get more into this in the budget presentation, but that will let us kind of maximize our staffing. They won't be assigned to a specific shift on any like red shift, black shift or green shift. They'll be able to jump between shifts when we're low on one shift and have extra on another. So more on that later. So when Glenn originally called out of the blue and said, would you be looking to locate a fire station on a DPW site? I jumped at the opportunity. My initial thinking, if somebody asked me how to plan for this city and where I would want that station to be located to cover the southwest and, and not lose much coverage on the southeast, I would have put, picked 76 and Ryan Road as close to that intersection as possible. So this gets us really close to that. You still have that five million-ish in construction, but we already own the land. So you're saving some money there, but you're also eliminating that 1.8 to 2 million it takes to staff a fourth station. It would, the advantage is it would allow us to meet our response areas in much, much more of the city. Better cover Station Two's area, but also better support the busier stations. What this also does is maximize the number of residential properties that we can reach within four minutes. That's the standard we're looking for. By locating it closer or with better access to residential, we know that's where our calls are going to be. Let's do that. We know we're not. The business park has been relative, Station Two handles probably 12 to 15% of our total call volume, and that has stayed steady. Even though new businesses are coming in and the park is still growing, it hasn't increased our. Right. An important point here is, like I said, I like to make decisions based on what the data tells. And the data strongly supports this option. So these, I'll make these slides available to everybody. They're a little bit, it's hard to take everything in all at once. But the more you look at it and can kind of understand what's being represented here, it makes a great deal of sense. So this is the current Station Two. As I said, it very well covers the existing industrial park. As we get to the residential areas that are coming in, in this area and over here, we're outside of our desired response time benchmarks. There's some minimal residential coverage here, but it doesn't well support Station One's area, which is our busiest. So this, effectively the more dark green on the map, the better we're covering our city. And you can see this one makes quite a bit of difference. This is all residential. This is all residential on Station One's area that we could effectively respond to from a new location and take that burden and call volume off of Station One, who is by far the busiest. It also covers these areas of proposed development, both residential and, um, commercial going on out here. I think as additional roads fill in in these middle green areas, that will start to turn dark green as well.
Chief, this is proposed Station Four. Kinda.
This would be closing this station and moving it to here. I, I don't have a Station Four on here keeping both open. But what's also important here is if you look at, and I said, I'll give you these to kind of study and compare, we're not losing any time to these eastern areas. It's almost identical to the map before it. The thing is we're right on Ryan Road, have instant east-west access on a larger road, and we don't have this 3,500 foot driveway to get. So this doesn't decline quite as much as you think when you're really looking at it. And especially over here too. Okay, this one's kind of tough.
Before you leave, can you go back to the last map? You know, I, I get what you're trying to do and, and it seems to make sense. My concern is you're doing this based on what's here now and projecting that you'd be able to reach these other areas. But those areas eventually are going to be dense with subdivisions. It, it almost seems like you're, you're going to need another one. Or you're going to need more personnel.
Yeah.
Or you're going to need more personnel in that facility.
Yes.
Will that facility have enough space to grow?
So we don't want to make this a 10-year decision or even a 20-year decision. We want this to be something that we can stay in for 40, even 50 years. It would be big enough that we can staff it with multiple companies if we need to. The thing, let me come back.
What would be the, what would be the use of the facility that you would close then?
But what's the plan for DPW for this site? We're going to build a new DPW garage and station?
Hang on, it's coming. You're right, but hang on.
That's the concept, yeah.
Well, Dan, you may be in the fire service for 40 years. Okay? All right, 60 years.
So this map, okay, this is station number one. This is our busiest, some of this we're trying to take up Station One call volume with. This is proposed Station Two relocated. And this gray crosshatched area that extends into all of these different areas is the four-minute coverage of the proposed new station. The green, um, without the crosshatch is what's covered by current Station Two. You can see how much of this, the proposed Station Two picks up. And we don't really lose any effective response time, uh, to the east because we're on such a major thoroughfare. We're losing a little bit of this, but as that's projected to develop as commercial. So again, it's not going to be a primary driver of our call volume. We still need to be able to get to it effectively. And I would think by 76 to Oakwood, I don't know how exactly this was mapped, but it might be even better than what's shown here. And this also doesn't take into account traffic preemption, lights and sirens, which also gains us some ground.
And just to remind everybody, as chief's probably going to talk about here. I'm sorry, it's down here. This area down here is showing white for a simple fact, there's no road.
There's no roads yet. So this would be our three stations and kind of you can see optimized where the new Station Two, um, very somewhat effectively covers the entire third of the city and lets us help these other stations with their call volume. And GIS also went in for each station and mapped the number of residential structures within four, five and six minutes from each of our existing stations. This is existing Station Two. 777 houses, um, CBRFs, multifamily that we can access within four minutes of travel time. Proposed Station Two relocation, relocation takes that to over 3,100. And if you look at five minutes, six minutes, it improves all of these. This is a 303% increase in the number of structures that we can access within residential structures, that we can access within four minutes. When we have new house purchasers or potential house buyers come in, they call the fire station to see where's the closest fire station because their insurance provider wants to know that to estimate their, their premiums.
Adam, just one stupid question. These numbers you're listing are current.
Current, that's correct.
So when the new homes go up in the southwest, that station, proposed station covers even more homes.
Yes. No, I was getting there, but thank you for bringing it up. I didn't want to get off track. So I, if you support data-driven decision-making.
We're following, we're okay.
If you support data-driven decision-making, the data tells us, and you've just seen it, that this to me is the right thing to do and the responsible thing to do. There might be a point where we need another station. And maybe this is a gamble, but for every year this gamble pays off, it's $2 million. So 40 years from now, maybe we'll have to build another one. But that's $80 million. Did I do that right? I'm bad at math. Yes. So, and in answer to your question, why we think it should go there and why we think this will pay out for years to come is, it's that location. We don't know where any specific subdivision will be or CBRF or senior housing. We know where the, the best roads are going to be. We know the state's not going to decide to put in another Highway 100 a mile to the south, and we know the county's not going to come in and build another 76th Street to the east or west. to the east or west. This is where we want to be because it gives us the best access to cover the most ground. That's, like I said, we can't predict the future, but we can project based on what we know, and we know these will be the best roads.
I guess what I would be looking for related to location would be acreage. Acreage DPW is going to take when they expand. Acreage that you're going to need and projected for both facilities would be important. And I know you're, it'd be nice to see how much of that is Root River, too, because, you know, you've, you've got a lot of Root River lands that you're never going to be able to, you know, do anything with, so.
And the answer is, your turn. Uh, Dan?
Just staffing, can you back up to your staffing and explain that a little better? One more time?
Uh, okay, so these two positions that we're hoping for, this is kind of the result of, in our last bargaining session, both management and the union both agree, we need to do something different with our staffing. We can't keep requesting 15 people. We need to think outside the box. And what this does is, we worked with the union to come up with positions that aren't really assigned to a specific work schedule. It's whatever day, okay, we're short on this day, so we don't have to do fill-in. So this is largely offsets some of our current overtime spending. If we're talking two positions and we're saving significant overtime, that all goes away. So, but I wouldn't limit it just to filling open vacancies because if there's a day we're at minimums, then we've got three people at Station Two. And it's not perfect. It lets us cancel incoming support rigs. We don't have to send, keep sending an engine company down there every time to support Station Two on an EMS call. So there is some positive benefit to that. There's also days where, due to concessions, I don't, that's not the right word, in the contract, where we will be at basically one above our current minimum staffing. And if this person transfers onto that shift where we're already above staffing, now we're at four at that station. That puts another rig on the road, that puts another company in service, and that limits the need of other stations to help support this two-person station.
And so that's good for next year. What's your plan for the future, then?
This doesn't answer that question long-term. This is, this is a Band-Aid. This two-person per year, for the next year or two years, it's a Band-Aid that will give us some flexibility to kind of ease our current growing pains. It's not a 20-year answer for how we staff the city.
Okay, that's kind of what I was looking for. I didn't think it was.
The facility can be.
I understand that, absolutely. I'm sure you're going to build it so that, as you said before, as this, we get more personnel and as things expand, you have more room there for it. Would you make this new headquarters, or is this going to be a substation?
We, like I said, if we're thinking 40 or 50 years, we wouldn't make this a substation. We are already out of room at Station One. We know that's probably where we're going to need to add staffing first. We don't have any more room to add staffing there. If we bump administration down to the new station, that will let us build out current office areas and debunk spaces for additional firefighters. We also have very poor ADA accommodations at that station, and we don't have a whole lot of privacy, I guess is.
There's a lot of issues in that station that would be able to be fixed by a remodel job.
Absolutely, I understand that.
And let's be clear, when you talk about vacancies, you're not talking about position vacancies, you're talking about individual vacancies by day or shift, excuse me.
Yes.
Just to be clear. And here again, this is, this is a responsibility of this side of the room, not that side of the room. They help us figure it out, but it's our job to fix it. And right now, given state law and our current budget situation, well, our ongoing budget situation, we just don't have enough money to spend on 12 firefighters. And the police chief wants, needs more police officers, and DPW needs more DPW drivers. So that's on us, not them, just to be clear. Adam's doing, Adam and his team, Glenn and his team, and the finance department and administration are doing a great job trying to figure this out, and they're all being very creative. So we need to support them as you are.
I think we all get that.
Again, Dan. We've met you before, but give us, John, your name.
Yeah, John Wallencamp, Cuny Architects.
Thank you.
Those are five-minute presentations, and I was given 15 minutes, so it'll be a long presentation. No. Thanks for having me here tonight.
Wait a minute, is this part of the bid package, or are you on hourly?
Excuse me?
Are you hourly right now, or bid?
No, no, I'm bid.
Okay, take as much time as you want.
A lot of things were talked tonight about efficiencies, so our goal is to kind of show you how we put together the feasibility study to gain those efficiencies and more importantly, gain them properly. Not just by saying we need these, we want databases, Adam mentioned, to back that situation. High level on the site, there's existing 60, a little over 60,000 square foot of structures. And what I mean by that, that's usable structures to house some form of equipment. So minus the large salt dome that was recently built, that's not within that equation. The site is 7.5 acres. As we go through the presentation, I'll highlight what's taking up what of that site. Just some illustrations on that site is mentioned, have been mentioned already tonight. The main building in the upper right, the salt structures in your upper left, the old garage, the fuel island. So we take every little piece of that site and kind of dissect that into the program that will be finalized to give us the final booklet of what we do here. Existing conditions, if you haven't been to the site, it's a structure that, yes, it was built in 1995. Was it built well? Yes, it was, but like anything, has its useful life as a structure and as a place to house equipment. The structure itself is in good condition still, so we're not presenting here tonight that that structure is going to go away. It's how we're going to better use that structure and take us to the next 30, 40 years. Just illustrations on the bottom left are, part of the report we do is high level on the buildings, but we are going to get in detail also of how the caulking looks, how the roofing looks, how the, everything on that building looks, because if a do-nothing decision is made, there's still a value that needs to be spent on that building, and that will be presented to the council, too. Couple slides here, Glenn's already mentioned.
John, I'm going to continue my theme for tonight by interrupting. Let's not do pictures like this again. None of us can see them. They mean nothing to us because we can't make out what they are.
Sure.
Carry on.
Upper left, as Glenn mentioned, these are makeshift hallways where office spaces have been created, storage. So our goal is to, how do we analyze these to better make the efficiency better in the space? Good illustration here in the bottom, or the left photo, you can see where the yellow striping is, that line that's going up and down, I think, that's actually where the aisle starts. So you can see when we say "equipment," there again, it was right-sized when it was built in 1995, but as equipment has grown, there's very few pieces of equipment that fit in their stalls that fit properly, which then creates traffic pattern situations, things like that. Vehicles, this is a day that most vehicles are out, but generally at night, vehicles are parked in those drive aisles. So dispatching needs to be done in a certain orderly fashion to even make it happen, and as Glenn mentioned, takes time, and really, time is money. Our goal is to, you know, why? Our goal is to look at every piece of, in the facility that we can gain efficiency, which leads to time of employees. Employees' time is the number-one thing that adds up to money. If things are better efficiently laid out, that saves time. There's things and tasks that get possibly outsourced that now can stay within the city. Our goal is to create a chart on the bottom right that shows you a payback analysis of when this building is reconstructed to the new program, how much money will that save you per year? Just some quick illustrations. All the upper yellow bars are existing conditions. The bottom left are like high-level imageries of what an efficient building would look like. You can see these vehicles, large vehicles, they have stalls that fit them, and they're at the right angles, things like, every piece of equipment has its home where it gets parked and doesn't need to get juggled around based on the day and the operation and the Same thing with the repair bay. It was mentioned on the weld bay, how do we weld vehicles, things like, all that takes time when you've got to move things and do it improperly. More importantly, the health and safety of the employees, just to make sure everything's met there. Every square inch of the facility, there doesn't necessarily need to be a room for everything, but there needs to be a spot where it should be placed properly. Things that are readily used, shovels, tires, ladders. Readily accessible is more important than having a space in a closet that someone's got to spend a couple more minutes to go get. So we help lay that out with the employees to make sure they're right, located in the right locations. Lunch break rooms, all the office amenities, making sure all those spaces work for the employees and function properly. So what the programming does is it literally breaks every piece of apparatus down from a vehicle to a weed whacker and shows what we need for that, making sure we have the right areas and spaces for that. And then we come up with pros and cons, and options ones, two, and threes, like where does it properly and work the best? We're looking at the number of vehicles you own and how that relates to the mechanics, and how long a vehicle is down, how long a vehicle has to sit and wait for parts. All those pieces we're looking at to make sure this building, that helps service that flows for the employees. Every individual space and room is detailed out to make sure we have the proper square footage. Our goal is not to oversize this facility. Oversizing a facility, number one, costs money upfront, but then also costs for the life of the building. Just going to go over a little bit of square footage, so as I mentioned, 60,000 square foot of existing structures on the site. We plan on using 44,800 square foot over. So the majority of the building is being reused over. The only two buildings that are proposed at this time, we come down to the buildings replaced existing at 15,330, and 5,400, that is one, that old salt structure. Very good numbers overall. I'm sorry. Yeah, there'd be second levels, which are the mezzanines. Currently today, there's a mezzanine level, which a lot of the plow, salt boxes and that are stored up there with a, that'll all stay in place. All the new storage areas that we create will have a second level for mezzanine storage in there, because naturally, the building has to be about 28-foot tall. The shops themselves don't need that height, so we just take up that, instead of stepping the roof down, which costs more money, we give that mezzanine space.
I think this really gets to the heart of the matter.
Yep.
And the next slide might do this, maybe even better, but this is really what, the heart of the matter right here. So if you could maybe just go over that a little bit more slowly, and then maybe the next slide, too.
Yeah, the next.
Yes, I did interrupt, just like you, I was taking your place.
The next few slides will break down these areas for you.
Okay.
But I'll just hit on them. So really, bottom line, where it's 60,000 square foot of space we're using today, our program is showing us we need 95,000 square feet.
Okay.
So you can see that that increases about 35,000 square feet to get us to a state-of-the-art facility to take us out to the next 40 to 50 years. So to get, to get to your points, where is, where are those numbers and how are they made up on the site? These two options are just different options we looked at as staff and groups to kind of see where we want to land on the site. Upper left was option one, upper right, the right side is two. I'm going to go to three, because this is kind of as a team where we're slowly landing on what's going to happen on the site. Currently today, where you're seeing the yellow here is where the current office and mezzanine is at. So we're proposing that gets all turned over to shops. The lighter green is all the vehicle parking with a little bit of repair up in this upper right corner. What we're proposing is, the darker green's new vehicle parking. The blue is a wash system. The orange is repair bay, and then the red is new office piece. This layout meets all the to-date program spaces that we need. This makes up that 35,000 square feet additional space that we need out of the site to operate. Upper right is where we're proposing the fire. As Chief mentioned, this, this is designed to potentially have two companies run out of space where we can dispatch to the, to the east or to the west and hook up to the main access drive. There again, these are only diagrammatic layouts right now. As we build as a program, they'll better define, but this is the thought process that we're at today. So you can see this whole upper right corner is pretty much going to be related to fire. Within fire, as Chief said, administration would be moving over to this space, so Station One could free up space for future growth that's needed at Station Two. Fueling, currently on this site plan, we're going to introduce two fueling locations. Right here is the main fueling, we're going to call it the main private fueling for, I'm going to say, city fleet, Fire and DPW, behind the gate, so Fire can reach it from the northern side, and DPW can get it from the southern side. The fueling in the bottom left off the cul-de-sac would be for the outside sources that currently fuel at DPW. This allows us to keep them out of our backyard and, but give them access in and out of the facility. The residential drop site would be south of here, and as Glenn mentioned, we'd be retaking over the southern half of the site for all the other entities that, if you remember his slide with all the, they need to go somewhere. That still needs to be populated on the southern half of this site. But it kind of gives you a ballpark, what, what makes up this seven-and-a-half-acre site.
Okay, John, stop for one second. New piece of information. Who buys gas from us that's not us?
Tony.
All right, just for the record, that was school district and House of Corrections, but also not mentioned was PD. But, so, we're gonna, we're gonna put in a special fuel island just for two other non-city people. I just say that so that when we do it 98.9 cents, we're making it 99.9 cents, so they can pay that service on that particular fuel pump.
And good point, Mayor. So we'll actually do a payback analysis to make sure that this makes good sense to do it. What would probably happen is we'd still have two fuel tanks, and they would be split down the middle and have dispensers on opposite ends of them, which also would help.
Details we don't need to worry about.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
But thank you, John, I appreciate it.
So I like to show the slide just to see, you can kind of see how you rank with other entities we've worked with over the last 30 years. I can tell you, all these communities have pretty much increased their square footage by the main driver is growth in the community. It, it's not necessarily the age of their building, it's growth that requires additional equipment that, that pushes you there. You can see, based on your building being in 1995, you have good area, your increase is only 0.85%, so it's, it's, it's well-equipped, where you're not doubling, tripling the facility like some other facilities have done. Case studies, these are case studies that we use for data to make sure we're right-sized in your community. They're not just guestimates we're doing. This is true case studies that our firm's been involved with for the last 30 years that we constantly refine and making sure we're presenting the proper numbers. Where are we would cost? We know we want to try to stick in the $16 million budget for construction, and the first phase of A&E fees is about $400,000. That's our target goal. Now, if we can be less than that, it's going to be less. Our goal's not just to reach it because we have a number out there, but we want to make sure this facility is right-sized for the community.
And the budget numbers are based on cost per square foot of recent projects? I was.
That's correct, yes.
I was going to scold. I do want to again make the offer that I know the department has offered. If any of you have not been to the DPW building, Station One, Station Two, Station Three, PD, any of those facilities, but specifically DPW and Fire, I urge you, take the hour and a half and go see it. Yeah, they're going to put the pitch on you, but you know that going in. You need to see these facilities and how they're laid out. And aside from that, it gets you more credibility with your constituents, because you can tell them what's going on. So, questions? Hold on, hold on. Where are you sitting? Andrea, Mayor. Okay.
Has there been a lot of changes since the former DPW Jerry Schaefer left? Because I've been in there, but I, pretty much it's not that much different, right?
Well, operations have changed, how things have done.
Well, I know, but I was talking about the facilities themselves, because I've been in there.
There's been no additions, no.
Yeah, okay.
No additions, more crowded.
Dan?
So, this is Site Option. So this is Site Option Three. Is this your final option? Was there more coming, or have we seen more?
We presented last week to staff, and then we took. We presented last week to staff and then we took Options One and Two and redefined it to Option Three today. We will have more meetings to keep going through. This is the first that staff has seen this slide since I emailed it over at 4:30. So it's a constant reworking, working. Our goal is to get to that right size.
This is the most current, your final for today?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, just one more quick. So essentially, the current building is the light green, existing vehicle parking, that's the current-
Everything from there north, yep.
That's the total of it. And then from the blue and the darker green and yellow, the back, that's new. Okay.
And purposely kind of, we're thinking as we're doing the program, we don't want to show a plan that can't be constructed.
Right.
We know we can't leave this building for a year, year and a half, so it's also flowing to make it work and to make sure we can construct it.
John, when you do these comparison slides, make them the same because people, graphically, I'm thinking that the one on the right, which is the new, is going to be much bigger than the one on the left.
Yeah. Yep, just blowing up the northern half, correct?
Yeah.
Yep.
Going through that. Anyway, okay, anybody else? Alderman Barber.
With the addition of the station, does you have to modify the traffic flow in this between the trucks and the fire trucks and the oncoming traffic? I mean, what is the consideration for traffic flow given the size of the vehicles and the emergency vehicles that are going to be on-site now?
Yeah, so if we look at the blow-up, it's pretty much everything up in this area here is fire alone and not mixed with DPW at all. So, the main dispatch point to fire is off here to north. The return traffic is coming around the sides here. DPW's main entrance is going to be down here off the cul-de-sac. So, DPW truck will come in here, employee vehicles are separated, so we're separating employee vehicles from DPW vehicles, fire vehicles from employee vehicles, that's all separated.
Visitor parking's way up at the north and the offices are way at the south.
So, this parking lot here is the employee park for the office piece. So, anything related to DPW is down here.
Got it.
This is the main parking for fire, which day-to-day they have very little staff. What we did is created the existing parking lot as an overflow for the large training room for once, three, four times a year at parking lot. So we're not creating a parking lot that's not usable.
Got it, thanks. And I apologize if I was out of the room when you'd mention it. Thank you, John. Alderman, Mayor, again.
Just a minor question.
Hold on. Okay.
Receptionist for DPW would be in the office section there?
Yep.
So that would be the public parking there above the employee parking?
Yep. Yeah, and, you know, working with staff, there's functions that they specifically do adjacent to sign rooms and things like, that's why that front office piece is adjacent to the yellow. So we're looking at all those little adjacencies with staff right now to make sure we land them in the right spot.
Call the upper public parking, training parking and the, put the public parking down there, make more sense. Thanks.
Staff on the right track? Or is there something you want them to stop doing or do differently?
I like where it's heading. I still don't really understand what we're going to do with that other building, so I'd like to hear more about what the plans are for that, if we're going to sell it and try to use the money, or if we can use that as some kind of office or equipment storage or maybe it's your scuba diving people or, I don't know, just-
Do you want the list?
I, well, I'm, my concern is, is it goes away and it's too hard to get back. And I, you know, I'm not looking to cut your department because I know where the city is heading with growth. And, yeah, it's so-
That's, I appreciate that comment, that's a good comment. It's been, leave as a fire station, turn it over to the Parks Department and have them, and I don't know who that is, but fill it full of equipment and recreational supplies, right? Heard that one. Clerk wants it as a polling location. Or we could sell it. But I get, what I want to take from that, unless any of you strongly object, you would, the sense is that you would prefer to keep it in as a city asset.
I guess I would because land is hard to get and land is going up and once you-
Yeah, but if it's in the wrong spot, we get what we got.
Well, the wrong spot for what?
All right, so, okay, so with that, I will take no consensus, we'll move forward with some options. So, okay, fine. Anybody else? This one? Thank you, John.
Yep, thank you.
Chief, good job. Glenn, you good job. Jim?
Eh.
Shannon did a great job though. Kevin, you always do a good job.
Thank you.
Thanks, both of you. I knew you were going to say that. Item four, discussion and awareness campaign contract with Houche Design Agency, Platypus Advertising for the PPII potential program, Mr. Morrow.
All right, three of three.
You got your pizza? Didn't order it yet.
All right. So back in May, we came to you, common counsel, I say we, myself and the Sewer Department, representing Sewer Department. We talked about a, what we call PPII, private property and land infiltration project that primarily MMSD would reimburse us with our funds, but we can only use for private property investigations and fixing things on private property. So, we were given direction at that time to go ahead and tell MMSD that we were indeed interested in using the funds for some sort of a, what I call inspection program, where we would try to figure out how to inspect as many homes as we could and we would try to target the, try to get the biggest bang for our buck, if you will. One thing we were told was, we, the city employees, don't need to be trying to sell this to the public because we're not very good at it. And admittedly, you're right. So, we invited a firm that, for those of you who may remember, when we first started talking about water contract issues, we were looking at some possible firms that would help us through the process to give the public awareness campaign. We didn't choose this firm, but they came, they had some really cool ideas that we liked and so we invited back to look at this project. And so, this team, and I'll let them introduce themselves, but they sat in with some internal discussions with myself, Mike Roberts, our utility superintendent, MMSD, and also our consultant through MMSD working on this program. So, feel like that they completely understand exactly what we're trying to do and so we're going to rely on their expertise to help us educate the public and try to make this, this really is a benefit for the public, but it is going to be difficult for us to convey that. That's why we asked some folks to come in and help us through this process, so-
Glenn, you said that you believe that Mr. Houche completely understands what you want to do?
I believe so. So-
Then I better be careful with my notes.
So, Mr. Houche and, again, I'll let Gary introduce themselves, but Houche Design and Platypus team together and they've pitched this to the internal group. You also instructed us to get an internal task force together. So we have met as a task group and this group includes Alderman, Holman, Hanneman. And so this task group actually looked at a proposal. We went through it and looked at the shopping list of ideas, picked the ideas as a group, we picked the ideas that we liked, picked some ideas that we took off the list, but so we invited them here tonight to kind of talk about their idea and not tomorrow night, but probably the next, or definitely the next council meeting, we will see a contract. And so I want you to be aware of what they're proposing and what we are actually buying. So, just to emphasize the fact, MMSD is not paying for all of this, so some of this would be, come out of our pocket, but I agree with your direction that this is a very wise decision for us to do because if, without this effort, I think, quite honestly, would be a failure with our, and I don't want to do that. So, I want to make sure that the money we spend is money well spent. So with that, I'll let Gary and Joe introduce themselves.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm Joe Houche. I'm owner and creative director of Houche Design Agency. Although I was out in the hall, I was mistaken for the mayor and I was signing some checks, so I'm not sure. Yeah. So you don't even have to worry about the contract, it's already signed. No. So I've been, I guess I've owned my agency now for 22-plus years and did it with another partner for a number of years prior. I am also a City of Franklin resident, I have been for 22 years and I think I'm in the target demographic and I think in the northwest corner, I think I, we're probably, me, is it going to be who we talk to first, I guess, but I am the guinea pig, but it'll be great. So do you understand everything about this? Glenn is awfully generous, we do know quite a bit, but I'm going to turn it over to my good friend Gary Haas that I have known since fourth grade and he's been one of my mentors and we've worked together. He is creative director at Platypus Advertising and Design and-
Okay, we go, thank you. So you can, you want to do the driving here?
Yeah.
Okay. So we put together this proposal and we also have handouts for you, so when this is done, we can give that to you? Oh, you already have a copy?
It's going to look a little bit different.
We made a few little changes, but we put a PowerPoint together here. So anyways, we'll just walk you through really quickly what we've kind of been talking to the group about, Glenn's group about. But, so the project description obviously is, we want to develop a communication strategy and the supporting communication vehicles that will eventually inform Franklin homeowners of the city's program to identify and correct any defects in the home sewer systems. And we want to make homeowners aware how clean groundwater and stormwater is going to enter the sanitary system through any of the cracks and leaks that could be in their laterals. And ultimately, that can cause lots of problems for them, their neighbors, with potential backups. So, the thing that some homeowners don't know is that those laterals are their responsibility and that what's on their property is really their responsibility to kind of correct. So we want to make them aware of that and the program can find these issues and then it can also assist in repairing them before they become a greater problem. So, what we think, the program needs to be positioned in a very positive light because there's potential issues, right? If you're saying, hey, we're here to come and find some problems for you. So I think when you're communicating the program, it's really important that we somehow kind of are able to kind of put a very positive, put it in a positive perspective. So we're really saying, you know, this program is offering free inspections, so it's not going to cost you anything and we're going to come and be able to go through your sewer pipe lateral system and kind of determine if there's any problems and that's going to be done by these inspectors that are certified by the City of Franklin. And then also, in a sense, not only is it a free inspection, but you're going to have access to free money by virtue of this program from MMSD that will have some significant portion of whatever repairs you have could be offset by the monies that are available. So we think there's two good things that we can really kind of tout in the program. And then, in our last meeting with Glenn and the group, you know, there's different ways that are yet to be determined as to how do you incent somebody? Is it with an incentive? Is it with a disincentive of adding dollars to their water bill if they don't participate? That's yet to be determined because there was some debate as to what the best method for doing that is. So that's something that we will still want to kind of take into consideration once that's determined. All right, so the approach that we started thinking about is, how do we create this awareness among the homeowners? Again, what I mentioned to you earlier, it's important for us to position this in a very friendly, fun manner to offset the fears that problems or potential costs could have involved. And also, we became aware that there's a program in existence already through MMSD that's called the Pipe Check Program that needs to be separate from this program. So we're concerned, we don't want to have confusion out there in the marketplace where they start to think of, you know, is that part of this or is that not part of this? So that led us to think about this a little differently. And so, we thought, where's the Pipe Check Program? And what you might normally do is brand the inspection. We thought, what if we chose to brand the inspectors? And we could use that as a positive to kind of help, you know, create this more friendly, fun atmosphere. So we thought, you know, could we position these inspectors as this heroic team of pipe grime fighters coming to save the day? And it's meant to be unconventional, it's meant to have a little bit of humor because we want to get noticed. We want people to kind of, when they see this, to kind of make note of it. And we think that the more you're able to raise that awareness and get noticed, the more likely we are to then kind of foster participation. So, we also will establish confidence in the team by kind of elevating them to that heroic type of an approach. So with that said, we thought, let's kind of give you a feel for maybe some of the tone that we might be able to kind of initiate here. So, we want to have you meet the Franklin Flow Force, right? Faster than a car with Illinois plates, more powerful than a Green Bay nose tackle, able to detect cracks in sewer pipe laterals in a single visit. Look, on your doorstep, it's a package delivery guy, it's the neighbor girl selling cookies. No, it's the Franklin Flow Force. Keen-eyed sewer heroes from the City of Franklin who can come to your home with inspection powers and abilities far beyond those of mere mortal men. And yes, the Franklin Flow Force who disguises mild-mannered municipal inspectors, check your sewer pipe laterals for cracks and leaks free of charge to help prevent costly troublesome backups. Count on this crack team of H2 know-it-alls to get to the root of your potential pipe problems. Schedule your free pipe inspection by, fill in the date, and join us in the never-ending battle for truth, justice, and optimal sewer drainage management. So again, we're just trying to kind of establish a tone that would get noticed and get somebody, hopefully, to kind of pay a little bit more attention than if it's just a letter that arrives in the mail and makes them aware of this. So then it got to, how do we get the word out? What are the different tools that we could think about and propose as a means for raising awareness? And so what you're going to see here is kind of our, a number of different things that we considered and as Glenn had mentioned, you know, in our previous meeting with the group, some, we kind of evaluated which ones seemed to be more effective. Each one has a price tag and we're kind of presenting this as a menu. So, don't think of it as, you know, everything, think of it as what makes the most sense. Yes?
I don't apologize for interrupting because it's, as Dan would point out, what I do, but I want to get a section before we move on. Can we back up a little bit?
Yeah.
I have a concern about using the word inspector, although that's what they're going to do, I have an issue because there's going to be a reaction on a couple of different levels. One is, is, I don't want an inspector in my house. I did some rewiring and I don't want them finding that. So, calling them inspectors may not be the best way to do this.
Okay.
I don't pretend to know what you ought to call them other than perhaps plumbers.
Uh-huh.
Sometimes simple is better. But I want to avoid using the term inspector-
Sure.
-because it may push back and it may also imply a level of authority that doesn't exist. Here we go. Let's do Alderman Hanneman first and then Alderman Will.
And that was something we discussed in the task force meeting when we met last week and one of the big concerns was using the word inspector, that the inspection department was going to be getting a lot of calls, you know, and the questions surrounding that. So, I don't think we came up with a great solution at that point and at first I thought a pipe assessment and I'm like, ooh, no, assessment's not a really good word either. So the point is well-taken and it was-
Yeah, I mean, for us, it's a nuance. I mean, we can make those kind of adjustments, that's not an issue at all.
Alderman Will.
Very similar comments, being here for quite a long time. Very similar comments, being here for quite a long time. And mine's more with the word force because we've had force and we've had enforcement. So that kind of goes along with the inspection comment. And I'm wondering if you might make it something like, something with Franklin Fresh Water or some kind of Franklin Fresh Impact or something that says you're going to make a difference, it's going to be cleaner instead of a more of an enforcement action. And no time to really think about what those little words would be.
Yeah.
But I, and I, well, since, you know, we've already gone through a couple of slides, I'll go back to some of my comments. I just want to comment on the pictures. They're colorful. They're catchy, but they don't represent, if you want to speak to the residents, I'm looking at the building setbacks. We were looking at downtown Milwaukee and those building pictures between the colors and the setbacks. It's, so I think you might want to give a more suburban look to speak to more of the residents here. We're pretty much clay-colored houses with big setbacks between buildings, you know. So it does, it's not as glamorous, but it does kind of...
Yeah, I think the things we're showing here are simply the presentation. These aren't the materials that we would be...
Right. But I don't know what you're putting out and what you're not. So I just thought...
Right.
So, and then there were wording in here that when you talked about disincentivize or incentivize, then there was this $5 surcharge if they don't sign on. So I, I don't think that, that's...
That's what's changed from the one you have or the new one?
Okay, good. You said it's not going to cost anything. The other term that I, you know, I get a lot of feedback from constituents, the other term is free money. I always hear there's no such thing as free money. So maybe it's, you know, where it's augmenting the cost or offsetting...
Yeah. So again, that's actually just for the presentation.
So, yeah. So if I may, I apologize for not spelling this out explicitly in the beginning, but we do have a task force working. And so we have yet to figure out exactly the details of the policy. So the thought was, we need someone on board to help us go through that process. How do we talk about, is it a $5? Maybe there's a better term. But there, but as a group, we need to figure out something as a recommendation to you.
I totally understand that. I'm thinking, but since you're using them, if it ends up being carried forward, you might as well hear that now rather than carrying some of that forward.
Right.
And, and I don't know if now is the time, but it talks about targeting audiences. And Glenn, this is, it's kind of the St. Martin's area. Is this going to be open to all or are you targeting...
So, so again, we've got the task group trying to figure out the details, but I think right now, we're leaning towards looking at the basins where we have the most problems. And then inside those basins, we'd like to target the oldest homes first. So we've had GIS help us come up with basically a listing of the oldest homes. And we'd start with the oldest homes, work our way forward until we aren't seeing a return on investment. Then we'd switch to basin B and start with the oldest homes, work our way forward. But it would be open to the entire city. So if you're not in a targeted basin, if you're not one of the targeted persons, you feel like you would like to sign up for the program and, you know, get the free money? Because it is going to be a first-come, first-served opportunity. I'd be more than happy to take the lowest hanging fruit, no matter which basin.
But this is residential. This isn't business.
It would be residential only because those would be the folks in charge of the pipe check.
Okay. And then when you're saying residential, you know, obviously we have condo owners. Are you talking about those are, you know, they're tax-paying residents?
I would have to verify with MMSD what they would qualify as residential. And we would follow the suit.
Let me just say that a little more sportsly. It's not our rules. It's MMSD rules. And currently MMSD is single-family homes.
Yeah.
Duplex.
Yes.
Okay. Because I, what I notice is condo owners, residential, pay taxes, get very little services and got cut out of a lot of programs. So I'm just making that point. And if you could clarify that with MMSD, that you're not going to include any residential people in condos because they're involved in family buildings or...
We'll have to verify that MMSD.
Thanks.
Just my two cents worth, just me saying this. I'm not sold on the humor bit of it. I think something more to the point, more tactful, more not using the terms inspectors, fresh water kind of thing, cleaner water. I think that would be more effective, but that's just my two cents worth. Humor doesn't work for me on this. Yes, only on this.
Okay, guys. I interrupted, so keep going. I'll interrupt again. Okay. Wait, Alderman-Barber, sorry.
I don't think a lot of people that own a home understand the plumbing underground and how it flows and what the potential problems are going from their turn-off valve to the outside turn-off valve to the sewers. Is there going to be any kind of educational component with that just to identify where clear water comes from and goes? And that fact that this might be preventative too, in a lot of ways, you might be able to reduce costs eventually down the road. I've had to replace the knuckle because it was on my side of the line. Wasn't on that side of the line. And people don't understand that. And that's their plumbing. So is there, I mean, a brief little educational piece? And then the preventative side of that where we could identify a problem that's going to cost you something down the road is maybe a component of that. So that's...
Yeah, that's kind of, and some of the things that are coming up here, we can show you how that's incorporated. Okay. So the first thing is, we would want to develop some program branding so that when we have different items that homeowners come in touch with, in contact with, it starts to resonate. So we want to have a consistent look and feel. We want to have a consistent tone of voice. So that would be the starting point. And then moving forward, in talking with Glenn and the group, letters, letters that go to each of the homes, we talked about two different types, meaning one, traditional, regular letter, right? The other being more of a certified letter to kind of make sure that we can prove that they've received it. Because I think Glenn has said in previous times, you send things to people and they go, I don't think I ever got that. And you know they have. So sending them a certified letter would kind of help verify that. And then, you know, can we do that in a creative...
If I'm the mayor, I'm going to tell you, you're writing the letter, you're getting the database, you're doing that, all of that. We can offer you some GIS assistance. But we're not writing the letter. We may edit it, but we're not writing it.
Yeah, that's...
Well, you offered an option there. I'm telling you what the option's going to be. And unless somebody on the council has, wants to worry about $3,000, I'm...
Yeah. But within the letter, I mean, there's different ways of doing that. Again, we're trying to, you know, think of how can we kind of get somebody's attention. So one option was in the letter, let's put a hole in the middle of the letter. And that's really what you want your pipes to look like, right? So I mean, we can use that attention-getting device as a means to kind of reinforce, you know, what is it that we're trying to do here? So having that hole, no tree roots, no invasive plants, it's just to get their attention so that we can then deliver the information about the program. And then we have costs and whatnot that are in your document that you can look at as well. Door hangers, you know, again, we can do a simple printed piece. We might be able to do something that's again, more targeted to get noticed. So we thought, what if we took mailing tubes that look like pipes, fill them with some of that crinkle material that looked like tree roots and organic materials, and use that as a means to kind of get their attention again? And within that same mailing or door hanger, rather, is all the information about the We could create a video. It would be a short video, talk about what the program offers, talk about some of the things that, Mr. Barber, you were talking about, you know, education, you know, what's happening under the ground that you're not aware of, but you're responsible for. How has that caused problems in the past for others? And how does this program kind of, you know, rectify those situations? And that could be played as YouTube pre-rolls. It could be played on social media and Facebook, certainly on public access channels. It can be available on your website. So you get a lot of different means of distribution for the video. Again, the brochure, we can have, once somebody's interested and they understand the program, the details that you were just talking about, the six-to-eight-page brochure can have all of that information in there, making them aware of things that they might not be aware of.
Small pages.
So, okay. A website landing page. So again, this is a page that you can go to, find all the information that you need, making it easy for somebody to kind of see the general categories. And once you are interested in something, you can reveal information and put a lot of information there, but it's not a lot of information for somebody to digest.
And you could sign up there as well.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. So there's sign up. That's, it makes it very easy. Like, you know, click here and this is getting your free inspection. When a home has passed the inspection, we thought, let's kind of create a clean bill of health, a certificate that kind of acknowledges that your home is passed. It would be very, one of the things we talked about in the task force meeting was having the language there be very clear as to what that was applying to. But I think that would be an effective way to say, hey, my home has passed the muster here. Simple things, you have the newsletter, so we certainly can use that to our advantage and have ads and kind of make people aware of what's going on. PR events, you know, does it make sense to have some kind of an event on one of the locations? You know, maybe there's a huge tube and something that's fun for the kids to participate in, but it's also used as that educational opportunity and it's also used as an option for somebody to sign up right then and there. Now, we had some ideas that were presented and through our conversations, decided not to pursue, but we thought we would still show some of the things that we talked about. So the realtor market, obviously, making them aware of things. I know Glenn has shared with us though, in past life, they've not been a real receptive crowd. So spending a lot of money to try to get to them doesn't make sense. I think when we initially, we knew that going in. So we thought, maybe a postcard or something that's relatively cheap to do. But I think Glenn, you said, right, that's probably something that's not worth the energy.
I think I can make contact, but I can do it.
Yeah. And same thing, title companies. Glenn has a lot of connections there that would make sense. And then lastly, we had also, we had worked together with the plumbers' union in the past. And because we had that relationship, we made a call and just said, is this a program you might be interested in participating with? And initially, they said, yeah, we'd be interested in talking to you. You know, that means that, you know, could they offset some of the costs on things? And they'd pay something because they'd see that as a potential way to generate, you know, work for their, their union contractors. Yes, but I think in our task force meeting, there were also some strings attached there that there was concerns that maybe affiliating you with just the union might not be the best thing. So we are showing that idea to you, but that was one that was kind of put on the back burner. And those are the things that we had presented.
Well, I don't know how many of you know this, but I think I was the first pilot project for the PPI inflow in the neighborhood over where you did the Glenn Meadows Park project. And the way, what I think was the most effective and got people on board was the neighborhood meeting. They put a tent up outside, invited everyone there, explained it to them, answered their questions, took some of the fear away about, who's the inspector? What are they going to be looking for? Are they going to turn me in if I have something? And that was really helpful. So I'm leaning more towards the PR type of thing with the tent event. As far as the brochure and the web page and those things in the video, I think MMSD has a lot of information that could just link to on this. So rather than creating something and spending the money, I would rather see us use some of that, maybe a web landing on our homepage, but then would link to something to MMSDs that explain, here's what a water pipe, what a pipe looks like when it's flowing, and here's what it, when it's clogged and how they get clogged. And then the other one is the city newsletter ad. I think that's really important because a lot of residents pay attention, take them a week or two to look at our city newsletter, but they do read it and pay attention. So those are my preferences.
Yeah. On the video, I mean, we talked to Becky from the MMSD and asked, you know, what availability to the assets that they had. And she said, you know, you're free to use whatever we have. So our thought was that we can customize it to your, the City of Franklin homeowners, but we'd be using a lot of that material that's already in existence to keep your costs down.
If I could add, so also Becky from MMSD noted that we want to, she wants to be careful about making ours too much like theirs or pointing those too much to them because they don't have the resources to basically cover all of Franklin like we're planning to do our projects. So we need to really, if you will, filter stuff of how we, how we involve MMSD because they don't have the staff to cover everybody like, like we're planning to do with our project. So we do need to make, somehow make a definitive line in the sand.
Glenn, we need to know what the cost, or the cost share is going to be. Can make intelligent decisions.
So for the, I can't tell you exactly because MMSD still has to decide. So normally, they don't do any PR. They don't do any PR.
Yeah, but Kevin wants this to be a success.
So that's good to know. We have heard that there, there could be some options. So for example, if it were just a letter that I, as an engineer, would write, we could allow the postage to be paid for by this program. We can, MMSD has yet to tell me how much, but they, they have said they could help out. But for the most part, we need to consider that all of this work really should be funded by Franklin. Anything we can get by MMSD is gravy on the cake, if you will.
Let's make a call to Kevin. Because the reality is, is this, this, although we did it in Alderman-Wilhelm's neighborhoods pretty extensively, this is a different type of program and it's managed differently and funded differently. Let's you and I maybe jump in.
So, so yeah, the inspections we can pay for, the, again, the financing of fixes to the grants, if you will, that's all MMSD stuff. But again, they do have a rule in OPR. So they're, I don't want to say they're bending the rules, but they're, they're trying to work with me as much as they can.
I just want to make it clear because I don't think, I don't know who was up there, but I don't think anybody really was up there, maybe except for you, Glenn, that was done in my district. This is different than the project that Glenn did with the pond.
It's the same grant funding, but it's a different way to do it.
Right. But I want anyone to be confused that the pond project was the same as what I was saying about the PPI inflow project when they set up the tent.
Correct. And matter of fact, you mentioned what Jack did as far as, you know, putting a truck out with the lights and the tent, got the whole neighborhood out. MMSD does brag about that one. It's been one of the most successful opportunities. So we talked about it in our task force meeting.
So if, I'm going to do what I do. Here's what I want to do. I want, we have your pricing. I want instruction from the council as to some level of this. That's what you're looking for, right? Right? If, I don't know, if this was, if we were all in, what's the number? And we aren't going to be all in, but if we were all in, what's the number? You did this as a shopping list. Ten grand?
No, it's more than that.
Yeah. Of course it is.
Okay.
I'm not looking for pennies here. If I went into, into the executive director of MMSD's office, Kevin, here it is. It's $22,000. It gives us everything we need to make your program a success in the south, in the northwest corner of our city as a pilot program. And we have license, Joe, you got to listen to this. We have license to use and give to you license for all of the materials. Give me the check.
Seven, five hundred. I just don't remember what.
I'm saying 23,000.
Oh, I thought you meant for just doing the brochure, PR.
No, no, all in.
Oh, all in.
All, so we don't need to deal with this tonight. All we need to know is, is that council is in favor of moving forward to this or wants to substantially limit it. That's all I think we really need to get to, right?
Yeah, we'd like to, some direction. So again, the task force kind of threw out the things we didn't think were, I should say, we as a group didn't think were effective, but you left in the things that, at least significant portion.
The task force is to do what's recommended here.
Yes.
Okay. And we, we authorize this task force to be put in place. Let's take their advice.
Roughly 25 to 30-ish.
All right. So we're going to go visit Kevin and talk about 30 grand max because that 25 to 30 doesn't include postage.
Right.
Printing.
Or printing. Does MMSD...
So MMSD...
Let's not worry about it.
Okay, so.
That's going to be a separate conversation. Because this is, this is a unique program wrapped into a standard program. So we're going to make it unique and wrap it into a standard program.
Point of clarification.
You don't need to do that. You're next. What's up?
The, well, there's a... Well, it is a clarification. So the money that you're talking, that we're all in, that's completely separate than what MMSD pays per household or it's combined, it's separate?
Right, because it's...
So you're talking about just this type of PR, this whole program, the project? You're just talking about that one? To me, it's a little bit high, but I...
You gotta start somewhere, right?
Right, okay.
You know, and to me, it doesn't make sense to have a, a program that we all, I think we all agree, could be very effective and very useful and not sell it. I'm doing your job for you.
Thank you. I was doing yours out there, so...
But I'm gonna split. So, okay. So unless anybody's jumping up and down, is there a motion to adjourn? Or other questions?
Contract will be at the next meeting, not tomorrow night.
Any other, your motion to adjourn? Wilham and Barber, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Glenn, do they have one copy from this morning?
No, they don't. They have copies. This is actually...